Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
National meeting of Tuesday, December 14th to order. The first thing we're going to do is committee reports, Southeast Council of Governments. I'll go ahead and take that one. We had our meeting, and then we had the annual review after that. So a few of the highlights, it was a record year for loans. They're currently looking for two staff members, so if anybody knows of somebody that would like to look and work in that area, please contact Lynn Keller Forbes. We also did a review of her performance for the past year, and we found that to be exemplary, and kudos to her. And we reviewed the financials for them for the past year, and they found them to be not only very adequate, but in very good shape. And going forward, there are some issues which I'm sure we can call her up later on when we talk about accessibility and housing. We'll move on to the South Dakota Municipal League Board of Directors. I know that Counselor Erickson is not in attendance, but it is possible she's on the phone. If she's there, make your sound. She is not there, so we'll kick that to the next meeting. Counselor remarks. Any council remarks at this time? I don't see any because everybody is so excited to get into the November 2021 financial results. Sean Pritchard, come up and do your magic, please.
Good afternoon, council. I'm pleased to come before you here this afternoon and talk about our November monthly financial report. I'm going to sound like a broken record from the last several months because there hasn't been a lot of changes in terms of what we're seeing on the economic standpoint, as well as in the condition of the city financially. But I will say, going back to the months of COVID, maybe some mundane remarks maybe are still lessing for us all and still seeing some very positive things for the city and some concerns happening from an economic standpoint. Overall, you can see for labor force and employment, we have had a slight decline here over the last three months in terms of total labor force. That's not uncommon during non-COVID years to see happening toward the tail end of the year. Overall, we still are up about 2.3% over October of 2019's average, so we are seeing positive movement there absent the decline we've seen over the last couple of months. As far as unemployment, we are at 2.0% as of October. That's the second lowest we've seen in the last 20 years, second only to the last month, which was just 1.9%. The statewide average slightly higher at 2.3, and of course, and the national average still hovering above us at 4.3%. Certainly, the thing that we're watching most closely here is those inflation numbers, which continue to uptick here. We see an inflation rate coming in for the month of November at 6.8%, which is the highest that we've seen in the past 20 years. That is up from where we were last month of 6.2% and 5.4% the day before, or the month before that. Received some news this morning that wholesale inflation rate was 9.6%. And so I comment on that just because it's certainly something we're watching as a city. On the wholesale side, seeing our projects escalate in terms of their total costs for us as we go into kind of our bidding cycle. We'll be letting a lot of bids here throughout the remainder of this year and going into next year. And we'll continue to monitor those along with public work specifically on some of those larger-scale infrastructure projects. With inflation, again, if we look at the different categories that we have there, energy sector rise at 33% in November of 2021 versus last year is driving a lot of that inflation. Of course, we were negative for most of last year, so it's not surprising to see that rebound fairly quickly. But it's rebounding at a faster pace than what it dropped last year and is driving those inflation numbers, as is food cost inflation, which is also higher than normal. If you exclude those two, you have inflation rate running about 4.9% overall, so still high, not as high as the overall inflation rate at 6.8%. Building permits, valuations, as you've seen in the news stories, of course, the city of Sioux Falls surpassed the $1 billion mark, so we were at 1.015 billion as of November 30th of this year. That's running about $345 million ahead of last year at this time. However, we did have that sizable permit until the end of the year for Amazon, so you'll see that spread while we'll still be ahead of and still have a record year. The spread from last year will be slightly smaller based on what happened in December of last year. New residential values are experiencing a $57 million increase overall. That's up about 41% from the last two years. New commercial, of course, is driving a lot of this. It's up $140 million, driven mostly by apartments, but you'll see that starting to catch up here in the next slide from where we were last year. And then, commercial addition and remodels, which we talked a little bit about last month, also up over $140 million total. You can see, these are the total permits that have been issued by the city of Sioux Falls for dwelling units in the city. We've had 819 single-family units permitted so far this year. That's 127 more than last year. 1,739 multifamily units permitted, and that is up from 1,555 last year. So you can see some of those permits from last year starting to catch up because they came in toward the tail end of last year as well. Overall, 3,009 units have been permitted this year to date, which is 380 more than the last year at this time. As you look at our sales tax collections, you can see if you compare November of 2021 with November of 2020, we are up 20% over where we were last year. But again, we try to compare back to 2019 for a more normalized look back. But we are still showing up 18% overall. As we look at some of those industries, it's really been across the board as it has been in the last several months in terms of just robust and diverse growth that we've seen in the sales taxes across key sectors. Entertainment taxes are up 35.8% over where we were last year. If you look at us compared to 2019, we're up 16%, but if you figure that's about an 8% year-over-year, it's certainly above what our normalized expectations would be for the entertainment tax. And that is being driven, again, by the rebound of the lodging sector primarily, as well as continued strength in the restaurant industry, which drives a good portion of these tax base. On the industry, look, see of the top 10 industries from where we receive our sales tax base, you can see continued growth in many sectors, department stores, eating establishments, lumber, still are proving very strong when you're comparing to where they were two years ago. You do see a slight reduction there in electricity, gas, and sanitary sewer services, but those tend to be a little bit more variable and probably not indicative of anything really changing over from an economic standpoint. Lodging taxes continue to come in very strong, even though we're coming into the winter months, the shoulder season. Still performing very well, primarily due to leisure travel, since business travel really hasn't returned to where it was a couple of years ago. You can see we're up 83% over last year, but we were significantly negative last year. If you look at us compared to 2019, we are up 23% over the same time period last, two years ago. So that's pretty extensive growth when you're looking at where we were during a normal period for hospitality. On the bid tax side, story is much the same when you compare us to last year, up 35%. We're up just 0.9% from two years ago. So again, as we've talked about in the past, what you're seeing is the lodging tax, which is driven by the revenue side for lodging at the 1% or the 1 penny, going up faster than, say, room occupancies. So you're seeing escalated room rates, occupancies that are staying pretty tight with where we were two years ago, pretty consistent. Overall, when you take a look at the revenues for the city of Sioux Falls here through November, we are at 97% of budget through this time of year. If you compare that to last year at this time, we are at 92%. Again, this is being driven by the escalation of the increased sales taxes that we've been receiving, particularly since about March and April of this year. And that's been continuing as well as some of the smaller categories, such as the bank franchise fees and so forth. On the expenditure side, you can see we're 80% of our budget expended through this time of, this year through November. This compares to 79% of budget where we were last year, so we're very consistent overall with where we have been in prior years in terms of total budget expenditures. Again, our total expenditure is really driven by increased labor costs, primarily within police, fire, parks of recreation. And then you can see highways and streets is under budget through November because we really hadn't had any major snow events in this portion of the season, and we were under budget for the first portion of the season for, in that area. So we've seen some costs, some expense savings there. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding our November financials.
Thank you, Director Pritchard. At this time, council members, any questions? Any questions? Wow. You did a great job. There are no questions? I'm sure if they have a follow-up, they know where to get hold of you.
Perfect. I will make one more note that I failed to mention, so this will be the last time that you will see me until probably April of next year, because we close out the year of November, and that will take us several months through. We get to the audit period, so during that time period, I'll continue to share sales tax receipts that we have electronically, so you can keep track of what we're actually receiving from the sales tax side. But we will be back after we complete the audit and then bring the first set of financials for 2022.
So let me just be clear. You just won't come in front of the council till April, but you'll still be around, right?
I will be around, and I'll probably be speaking on other topics.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that we all understood that.
Last time you'll see a financial report, till then.
Thank you very much, sir. At this time, we'll move on to accessible housing update. Kevin Smith, please.
Good afternoon. Kevin Smith with Planning and Development Services. Also with me today is Lynn Keller Forbes. Lynn is the Executive Director of the Southeastern Development Foundation, and she'll be speaking to you in a couple of minutes. And just to follow up what Sean was talking about, you saw the information regarding the amount of new housing that has been constructed in 2021. It's a great thing. We're very proud of going over $1 billion in construction value. Certainly, within that, the addition of new single-family homes, new townhomes, new apartment dwelling units. But within the framework of our 2026 housing plan, there's also a fair amount of attention, and I'd say it's a very important topic, is on the existing housing that we already have. And what are we doing about that? And who are our partners? And how does that all fit together? So hopefully, our presentation this afternoon will be informative and provide you a little more insight. Again, council's already seen the 2026 Housing Action Plan. Counselor Selberg, Matt Tobias from our office, both serve on the Accessible Housing Advisory Board, or Ahab. And there will be in future presentations more information about the outcome of some of the workshops that have taken place and some of the initiatives regarding future investment in both local and state and federal dollars. But the overall guiding initiatives of land, workforce, public incentives, partnerships, design and building standards, infrastructure, these are all very important to us, and you know, there's a certain amount of urgency to get some of them underway. So this afternoon, we're going to focus on land and public incentives and partnerships. And certainly, we have many partners in the accessible housing area. One in particular that I think many of you are aware of is Southeastern Development Foundation and the good work that's done there. But if you look down at those bullet points underneath land and public incentives, you'll see things like proactive land assembly for redevelopment and moving existing homes and partnership for costs of moving existing homes. These are very real things to us. And it may not result in the same number annually that we see in new construction, but in terms of getting folks into houses, saving, preserving, rehabilitating the existing housing stock that we have already, these are very important. So we internally pay a lot of attention to those bullet points. And again, you'll hear more about the action plan in future presentations. But today, we want to focus on some of the good work that Lynn and SEDF have been doing for not just, you know, the past year, but for quite a while. So with that, I'll turn it over to Lynn, and she'll walk you through some of their programs. Lynn?
Good afternoon. Lynn Keller Forbes with the Southeastern Development Foundation. Appreciate your time today. Just want to give you kind of a brief update. I know that I've seen many of you in the housing meetings that we've been in throughout the city. Lots of good work going on and efforts to try to figure out this very ongoing problem that we seem to have. We got in the housing business almost by mistake. Nobody else was doing it. And as a nonprofit, we kind of started doing a little here and a little there, and ended up being, ultimately now, we are a developer. I have six guys, a crew, that actually works for me, including, we've done a lot with prison labor. We've had to because we face the same workforce shortages that all the rest of you do. So just want to walk through some of the good work that they've done. We've hired some of those prisoners as they've gotten out, and we've tried to house them. That's a whole nother topic for a whole nother day. If you've ever tried to find housing for people that have come out of prison, that's tough, too. But we've got a couple of people on staff that have been released. They've paid their dues, and they're working for us now. We also, every morning, stop by the prison and pick up four or five inmates that are out doing community service. And we have, we take them to the job site, and they work with us all day, and they've become a very integral and important part of our crew. So I just kind of wanted to highlight the work that they are doing and how important those partnerships can be in the community. So we do quite a few different things at the Southeastern Development Foundation. We sell the governor's house on behalf of South Dakota Housing. Those houses are built down in Springfield. And it's kind of a dual purpose. They provide affordable housing, but they also are providing those inmates with some skills in order to have a job skill set when they get out of prison, and those are in very high demand right now. So if they can learn a skill of electrical when they're in prison, very transferable to getting gainful employment when they get out of prison. So we sell those on behalf of South Dakota Housing, but we also buy them. We buy 10 of them a year, and we are developing those in a couple of developments that we've got going on right now. So that becomes very important. Those are income-based. You have to make less than 80%, typically median household income. So we do the underwriting on those and make sure that the individuals that are getting into those are qualified, income-qualified on that as well. And then a partnership that we got into with the city of Sioux Falls, probably, I want to say, two or three years ago. I call them recycled housing, but you tend to buy a lot of houses either for redevelopment for drainage. It could be redevelopment for a road, any of those kinds of things. And traditionally, you've torn them down. And you asked us a few years ago if we would consider moving them, if we thought we could rehab them, and could you do that and make it to where they could be saved? And so we tried that, and it's turned out to be almost overwhelming some days with the partners that we have that are calling us with houses. And that's, you know, we've taken a house from Sanford. We've taken a house from the Sioux Falls School District, and we've taken private houses from people that maybe have either bought the land and just want to do something else with it as well. So we'll walk through some of the things that we've been doing. Here again, we talk about the Governor's House program. For the ones that we buy, and this is pricing this year, and I can tell you, I was fearful as we started the year, and we were pre-selling. We pre-sell most of these. They qualify, and we put them on a list, and then as they become available, we sell them. And I was very fearful about what our pricing was going to be, because if you remember back in April, my construction manager was going into Menards, and he came in one day to my office and said they've stopped putting signs up at Menards telling you how much the price is. Because it was fluctuating so much, you just had to blindly buy a board. You didn't know how much it was anymore. And so it was the first year ever that, as we went into this, we didn't know what the houses were going to cost us. And that's a little bit scary. Thankfully, with some of the inmate labor and some of the other things we were able to do, we were able to contain the cost. They are about $15,000 more than they were last year. But still, in this neighborhood and market, and if you see these houses, there's still some built-in equity in them as well. So if you bought a house from me this year, one of the governor's houses of the 10 that we've got, you'd get a 1,200-square-foot house. It's three-bedroom, two-bath. We buy the lot. We do everything. It's turnkey. We put on a two-car garage. We put in all the appliances. It's 2x4 construction. I want to emphasize that. A lot of people tend to think this might be manufactured housing. Not that there's anything wrong with manufactured housing, but that's just not what this is. I always try to steer people to more of the custom-touch-home type example because people seem to understand what that is. So this is, it would be more of that kind of a product, very energy-efficient and could qualify even for Energy Star certification. So this is what they look like. This is one in the northwest part of town that we've developed up in the grasslands area, kind of in the neighborhood of the new Jefferson High School. We've been working up there since 2016. We got to the point this year where we've developed all of the available lots we had, and so we had 7.7 acres, and we actually had to develop the infrastructure on that so we could put in another 24 acres. But we look to have that built out probably within the next year or two as well. So it's a continual struggle to find land. South Dakota Housing uses my houses a lot to stage their own stuff into a lot of their marketing, so they came in and actually staged these houses, just to give you an idea of how they look when you, the finishes and things like that on that. This is the master bedroom on that, and the master bedroom also has a three-quarters bathroom as well. So the other thing that I try to do to set people up for success is, because they are income-qualified, is I try to get as much other help that I can from other partners as well. And a good partner to us has been South Dakota Housing through their Housing Opportunity Fund. I'm not sure if Alex sat on the legislature when they put that in place, but if you didn't, you know, funding that was really important, and it's important that they continue to fund it because it's state money and it's very flexible. So these houses this year all have a $15,000 grant in them. So we list the price for $200,000. And I'm a broker, so I do all the listings and the underwriting for these. So we list it for $200,000, and that $15,000 is a second mortgage on it. It's at 0%. It just sits there. They would only have to repay it if they sold the house or they tried to do any cash-out refinancing. And it's forgiven over a period of five years, so every year that they live there, they get $3,000 taken off of that. So their mortgage is really $185,000 plus their closing costs. But again, if they sell it in the first three years to kind of prevent the whole, everybody gets real concerned about flipping and subsidizing and those things, so in the first three years, there is a deed restriction on it. If they tried to sell it within that amount of time, they wouldn't be able to realize any kind of profits on it, per se, to try to prevent that from happening. The other thing is, we've talked a little bit about the house relocations. I call them recycled homes. And so we've got, this again is our grasslands addition that we purchased in 2017, the last of it. And we've got 20 or 18 houses that have been sold and are in process that we have moved, which seems like a big number. It was kind of fun when Kevin called me about this. I said, "I have no idea." He was asking me all these questions about how many houses, how many of this, how many have he sold? And I said, "I have no idea. I'm so busy. I don't take the time to kind of reflect and track all this." So I spent a little bit of time looking, so it was interesting to see that we have saved 18 houses from the landfill. I don't know if this is true or not, but I had a guy that called me from New Orleans, and he said for every house that you save, not only do you benefit from the landfill, but also the process of not cutting additional trees. It says saves you about 200 trees for every house that you save and are able to rehab. So let's look at some of the ones that we've been able to do. I heard that this actually made its rounds, I heard in the staff's office, and actually, the mayor tweeted this. This was a house that was given to us by a private contracting company. They bought the land. It was up by the Walmart on the west side of town. We'd never moved one that was multi-level. My mover's famous for saying he can move anything I find, so we kind of tested him a little bit on this. And we moved it there, and we set it down. And I always try to warn the neighbors when I'm going to move something like this in, because if you have, the house across the street's like a $500,000 house, and so you try to warn them about it. Sorry. We will fix it. But you can see what we did on the right to it. I mean, we really try to make these nice. These we sell as market rate. I like a nice mixture. I don't want full, low-income neighborhoods. It's nice to have a mixture of a mixed neighborhood, and so this is just an example of one we did. This is one that you guys gave us that we moved from Augustana. We split it in half. It was a townhome. And we relocated both pieces of it and kept them a single family up in that grasslands addition as well. Just a few before-and-after shots of these. You see, we go in and paint and usually do all new floor coverings, and depending on how bad it is, we do a lot more than that as well. The other thing that we are in partnership with you with is the former Boys and Girls Club that was on SNEVI. The Boys and Girls Club moved to the new campus of the school for the deaf. And we were approached about whether we would be interested in getting involved in this project. This is the first time that you guys have actually given us money. You gave us the funds to purchase the property, and then you also gave us the funding for demolishing the building. And then we secured the funding to put in the road and all the infrastructure that was necessary in order to come up with these 24 lots. We had a lot of interest from the community when we went out there, really nervous about what would the housing look like and what kind of people are these. I mean, you get a lot of this where people are nervous. I remember one of the gentlemen I was talking to said, "What are you going to do to my home values?" And I said, "Well, actually, sir, yours are probably going to bring mine down." And it's true. Mine are, I just had one of my governor's houses over here that was done, that we sold for 200, it appraised for 225. So our houses are the nicest in that neighborhood. If you want to drive by there and see it, it's really going to be a nice neighborhood by the time we're done. But again, we did 12 houses there this year. I've only got 12 more lots, and I'm done. So if you hear me say it once, you're going to hear me say it probably 30 times today. I need more land, and that's where you guys can come in. This just gives you kind of an aerial footprint of some of the houses that have gone in there. Nine governor's houses are going in there, and then we moved three houses that you donated to us from the Rose Lotta area up there. We renovated two of them and sold those. And then the third one, the outside's done, and we're working on the inside right now. This is what it looked like before, and then we went in and demoed it and cleared the whole site. These are some of the houses. So this house was down on Rose Street originally. And you can see, it's a challenge when you're trying to fit these houses in. You want them to look good. People want attached garages, and you're, so you're sometimes trying to worry about, how am I going to make this work? But you can see, we added that on the front. The former front door is now the garage door if you were to go into this house. And then we relocated the door over, so it enters now into the living room. So this is the one that hasn't sold yet. It's in drywall stage right now, and it's a good, we're looking forward and saving some indoor work for my guys, so when it gets cold, they'll have somewhere to go, so we can keep them on staff through the winter as well. You know, I think all of us, as we do these things, I think we get wrapped up in the numbers and how much time does it take? And we've just sold, and you know, I've got to sell one because I need the money to do another one, and all of these kinds of things. So I think sometimes we might lose the impact that we have on people's lives. And so Kevin asked me today if I had any family that I wanted to bring with me today to highlight someone, and I do. You're not supposed to have favorites, but I kind of have a favorite family. I met them five years ago. And Jenna is with me here today. Jenna LaCqire is her name. And she, and I met her family five years ago. I don't want to steal her thunder, but I essentially met her when I had a house that I was renting out, and she and her significant other and their kids, there were four at the time, they're six now, needed a place to go, and they had a Section 8 voucher. And those of you that have ever dealt with that program know that's also difficult as well. So I'm going to, I brought her with me today. She actually is my administrative assistant now. She's been working with me over a year, and I told her just to tell her story. She doesn't get up and do this kind of stuff, so give her some grace, but I think that you'll enjoy her story, and she'll bring to you, you'll remember her words probably long after you forget mine today.
So as Lynn said, I met her about four and a half, five years ago. Family and I were, we were homeless, had no place to go, and we got a Section 8 voucher. And we ended up finding Lynn to rent from, rented from her for four years, worked at Taco Bell, had six kids, and couldn't really afford to pay for childcare for six kids, working two minimum-wage jobs. So we made the decision that my husband would stay home, and I would work, just because that was what I wanted to do. And Lynn came and gave us the opportunity to come and work for her. We took that opportunity, learned about the Governor's House program, worked hard. Our credit wasn't very good. We worked really hard to get our credit back up. We just recently closed on our house on the 18th of November. And yeah, so just really happy that, you know, this Governor's House program is there for people who need it, because it really helped us out a lot, especially thinking that I would never be a homeowner, got off of Section 8, and you know, just continuing to grow, just gives me a little bit more, I would say, strength to just, you know, try to work harder on what we want. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to wrap it up, and where I started is it's great when we talk about new growth and expansion and all the new houses and dwelling units and apartments that are being built. But it's as much of an urgent need for us to continue to find land. And, you know, to also emphasize what Lynn was talking about is every time we lose an opportunity to save a house, then it's one opportunity lost for someone to move into an accessible and affordable home. So you won't see the thousands of numbers that you see when we talk about new construction. But I would argue that this is every bit as important to us, especially for maintaining the core, the core neighborhoods of the city, whether it's over on Office SNEVI or anywhere else. We've got other partners, other locations where this is a daily thing. And our, you know, our partners in public works helping out with, you know, infrastructure issues and just being there for us. It really is one team working on a large project, a large issue for our community. And we're glad to do it. So unless you have any other questions, that wraps up our presentation this afternoon.
Thank you. Very important work that you're doing. I'm sure the councilors will have questions. Counselor Silver?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much for the presentation, Kevin. I think you just hit it right on the head with the projects like these are key to maintaining like the core neighborhoods and that. And thank you to the, I'm sorry if I missed your name, but thank you for sharing your story and congratulations. I hope we hear a lot more stories like that. You guys do a great job, especially as tough as it is right now, putting out a good product with nice finishes and are attractive and still keeping it affordable. And it's kind of amazing how well you do and keep the price points in there. What is the, so like that Rose Street House, which is just about finished, is that going to also be a home right in that $200,000 price range?
The first two that sold there, one was a two-bedroom, one-bath. It sold for 186.5. The one that was right next door was a three-bedroom, one-bath. That sold for 227.5. So I expect it will be somewhere probably in that 225 range. We sell those as market rate homes, again, to try to get a mixed neighborhood in there. We need to do at least 51% of governor's houses in there. But the rest that we do will do is at mixed, as mixed housing in there.
Okay. What was the price point on the, that multi-level that you moved against?
We haven't priced that one yet. The exterior, it looks fantastic. And we added the four-car garage to it. So if you, if you're a garage guy, like most guys, it goes back 30 feet. So everybody wants that garage. I don't know about the house. But we haven't priced it yet. We haven't finished the inside of it yet. And then we'll, we'll sit down and do that as we get closer.
Okay.
I expect that'll be again, we're trying to wrap everything up on the exterior and we'll try to get that on the market sometime this spring, probably.
Okay. No, I think it's great. Like lots of different shapes and sizes, that type of thing too. So that's why I was curious how close to that price point they were all staying as well. But thanks for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Other councilors? Counselor Neitz?
You mentioned you need more land. So what ideas are the city working on to figure out how to obtain more land, particularly in the core of the city?
So if I could say one thing about land, you know, what we struggle with is we need about 10 to 20 to 30 acres, kind of our sweet spot. We could buy that, we would buy that. But you can't find it anywhere. Every piece of land that comes up, that's approximately anywhere near the city that you can get sewer, water or sewer to, is priced at $45,000 an acre. And they want to sell it in 150-acre parcels. And I can't afford that. So, you know, one of the things that would be nice is if somehow, and if you guys wanted to, that'd be great. But we need someone to buy that 150 acres and then to go in and say, okay, Habitat, you can have or buy. I mean, I'm not asking for a gift here. I'd buy it from you if you could get it and parcel it off to me. I'd also take it as a gift if you wanted to as well. So either way you wanted to do that. But I think Habitat would take land. I think Affordable Housing Solution would take land. I think if you talk to some of the smaller developers that maybe do five spec houses or something a year, they can't find any land. So I think you wouldn't want it to be 100% all affordable housing. But I think you could go in and do some mixed use in it. And that would be extremely helpful for those of us that are kind of locked out of land right now. And again, guys, I'm, I don't know how to emphasize this enough. It looks like I have a lot of lots. But when you start talking the numbers of the things that I'm coming, and you know, I just talked to somebody else the other day that has another five houses for me, you start moving that amount of houses and you run out of lots really quick. I figure I've got maybe a year, maybe two at best of inventory. And the thing I really need is enough inventory. Because if I get a house, I have to figure, they're all different shapes and sizes, right? So I have to have, a lot of times I'll get a house and you guys were just generous enough to give us two that were up in the Public Safety Center area that we moved. But they were, they were big. They were, you know, two-car garage, this, that and the other already on it. So you don't have a lot of flexibility. So I took, you know, I take those and then I have to have where, what lots will these even fit on? So you have to have more than what you think you're going to need just to accommodate what you might end up with.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Kylie?
Thank you. If, I would just, if any of my colleagues on the city council have not had the opportunity to tour a governor's house, I would highly encourage you to do so. We did that a number of years ago now already. And I was thoroughly impressed with the quality of the home. And so please, if you have not, I think it's worth your time. But this is just one aspect of addressing a critical issue for this community. And so I think we really need to continue to do the best that we can to come up with other alternatives in addition to this program too. Otherwise, we're going to be behind the eight ball with addressing this. But thank you very much for your work over the years on this, in this effort in this regard. And I know that former counselor Kenny Anderson, this was a topic that was always very near and dear to him too. So it's not anything new. It's been around for a while. It's going to continue to be around well into the future. But again, thank you.
Thank you. So Counselor Sale and I went on a tour. I'm happy to do that with any of you as well. One of the things that I didn't mention that we recently purchased is at the corner of Fourth and Cliff. There was a house there that was all boarded up. It's an old governor's house. It's right across from that gas station on the corner there. And we bought that. I kind of felt like when we bought it, we bought it from South Dakota Housing. It was in foreclosure and I had never set foot in it until we bought it. And the day I bought it, I felt like, you know, those shows where you go over and say, let's see what we bought? And we took down the plywood and oh, wow. So that's a work in progress. Kevin was brave enough. I usually say, well, wear comfortable shoes. You don't care about getting dirty and things because we're going to go trudge through some of this stuff. But he came through that house and I said, if anybody else wants to come through it, come see it. Because you got to see the before to believe what the after looks like sometimes. But that'll have a really good impact on that neighborhood. We're going to put two, a two-car garage on it. Although like most things that, when I buy something, there's always some issue. We're having to rezone it and we have a few other issues there that we're working through. But we look forward to showing you what that property can be like. And typically, when we come in and do something like that, nobody wants to be the ugliest house on the neighborhood. So you'll see the other neighbors start to do things too. And hopefully, you know, again, that's just one house. But hopefully it'll have kind of a nice impact on that cliff area.
Thank you. Other councilors? Counselor Neitz?
I should know this. It seems like maybe we do. Do we have something in place where we waive permit fees or rezoning fees for certain entities like nonprofits?
You do waive the permit fees. And if, when we're moving a house in town, the police don't charge us for that, we do not, we do still pay plating fees. But you waive some of the other permitting fees.
Okay, thanks.
Which is helpful.
Well, I see no other questions. I would like to thank you for your presentations. It's very powerful and what we need to do. And I would like to thank you for your words about what it takes to get a house when you really start from zero to get that. And I would say that owning that first house is a huge step forward. I know it was for me. Didn't even have a scoop shovel to shovel the driveway when we got our first house. And it's something you need. So thank you very much for your presentation. At this time, we'll move on to public comment. If anybody has any comments on the two subjects that we talked today, now's your chance to come forward.
Mark Weber, I'm going to be using the overhead projector. After this first page, that'll need to be rotated. Well, I will start by saying that the 10 largest industries, as you already know, represent only 60% of the sales tax. The five that I have checked are retail. I term them sectors. The business services one is in the service division. And the others are division level reports. All of this that I've done in the past, both by email and in graphs, since I've been doing this for about four years now, city finance department in a total rolling growth rate is at 16.9%. My data is at 16.3%. So it's, should be pretty comparable. I have in the bottom the percentages of total, which I've shown you in the past. And this is basically a graphical analysis of all of the, all of the sectors of what has taken place in this, in 2021. Retail trade, finance, insurance, manufacturing have been positive throughout the year. Services started to be positive in a rolling growth rate as of June, wholesale trade as of April. Transportation is the one that's really the lagging variable here. It still is not, is not positive. I don't think you see that in any report that comes from the finance department. So as far as interpreting this data, I would say 60% of this local economy, as far as sales tax is concerned, was in recovery at the beginning of 2021. But now through November, fully 90% is recovered. Now, this is the 54%, which is the largest division, no, sector. And these are the subsectors. And there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight of them. And you can basically see what has, what has happened throughout the year in terms of, in terms of rolling growth rate. Miscellaneous retail is the growth rate leader, both in size and rate for this year. General merchandise stores, food stores, building materials, furniture, stores, auto dealers slash gas stations have all been positive for the entire year. Eating and drinking establishments, their positive growth started in May and has really taken off since then. There is a trade-off between, in my mind, between food stores because there's less meals taking place at home. Because the data shows a declining positive rolling growth rate beginning in March. Finally, the apparel and accessory stores at 5% is the smallest retail sector, started its positive rolling growth rate in May. And during the course of the pandemic, that was a sector that was, I mean, just negative across the board for the longest time. And it's nice to see that coming back. The sector is a little bit more confusing as far as the graph. Service sector accounts for about 20% of the total. And these are the subsectors of service. This sector has always been a drag throughout the data period of both the pandemic nationally and locally. That has changed for us in 2021. These eight sectors account for about 92% of the service, service sector total. Business services, which is one of the, one of the top 10 that the finance department reports, that's the largest sector of services. June 2021 saw positive growth in engineering slash accounting and personnel services. It started growing again in July for auto repair, hotels and legal services. And in September of 2021 for amusement and recreation services. Now, this is a little bit of a history lesson. Remote, remote sales, internet sales was voluntary until the state of South Dakota.
Thank you. You know, your time is up at this point. So if you want to come back next meeting and finish up, that'd be great. Anybody else for a public comment?
That is from Sioux Falls. During the financial report, something I've been asking for for several years. And finances said that they could do it. The planning department said they could do it, but nobody ever does it. When we look at building permits, I would love to see it broken down in the percentage of public projects compared to private projects. And of course, that's not as simple as this and this. When I talk about public projects, that's school, city, county. I also talk about projects that are subsidized by, like with TIPS, which are tax rebates. I believe all that should be in a separate, using taxpayer money and saying, look at all this building we're doing. We did a billion dollars worth of building permits this year. Oh, by the way, 40% of that came from the taxpayers. Now, I'm not saying you're not doing your accounting right. The billion-dollar permits are accurate and I went and looked at it. I'm just saying, be honest with the public about where, what is actually private investment? So, you know, single-family housing, apartments, manufacturing. And say, well, of that billion dollars, 60% is private investment. Banks and other private investors. And then the other 40% comes from you, the taxpayer. And why is the taxpayer building all of this stuff? Why are we having a billion dollars worth of building permits in the city? Well, because we have enormous growth and we're growing for growth's sake. Could save taxpayers a lot of money on, on a lot of this stuff and infrastructure if we actually planned better and did slow growth. But I'd love it if, when they do the finance reports and do the building permits, tell us what percentage is 100% private investment and what percentage is public investment? I think you need to be clear with the public about that. Can't just come out and have a press conference and go, billion dollars worth of building permits? Oh, and by the way, you paid for 40% of that. It'd be nice to know. And a little thank you would be great too. The public never seems to get a thank you when they spend money on this stuff. It's always the great developers that have saved the city. Anyway, as for the housing thing, been bothering people for a long time. I had a meeting with Kenny a decade ago about this. Need to redevelop the core. We need to do it in a pilot program. But you can't just say, we're going to do it. You got to have an outreach program. You got to have people knocking on doors. I had a community development loan 15 years ago. It was fantastic. Brent Tucker was wonderful. He walked me all the way through it. But you got to do the work yourself. But it would be nice to hold people's hands. I think a lot of people don't apply for these loans because it's complicated. And I don't think that they have the staff in community development to do a large-scale community development plan. I also am confused as to why this wasn't thought of three and a half years ago when you all took office. Four months from an election and, oh, by the way, we're going to finally do something about the housing issues in this town, four months before the election. Hmm, that's real curious. So for three and a half years, you haven't done a damn thing about it. But now all of a sudden, it's a big issue. Told someone the other day, if this isn't down in ordinance before April in the election, it will never happen and it will fizzle out. This is an election ploy. I want to see something. You got four. I want to see something, you got four months. I want to see something on paper passed by this city council that you're going to do this. Otherwise, it's just talk as usual, lip service. I find it really, and I'm not the one that thought of this. I've had tons of people saying, hey, isn't it funny, four months before the election, all of a sudden, they're worried about housing in this town and rebuilding things? I said, yeah, isn't that funny, how that works? But I do want to say that the governor houses are wonderful, very well-built houses. I had a cousin who was a supervisor. He said that the prisoners loved it. They said they enjoyed the experience. They thanked him a lot. They thanked the prison system for doing it. They're very well-constructed houses. They're supervised throughout the entire building process, which you can't say about private contractors in this town unless you're standing there watching them build the house. So they're very well-built houses and they're very well worth the investment. And I also don't think we should put garages on these low-income affordable houses. You don't need a garage. You just don't. They can build a garage later. Thank you.
Anybody else for public input, public comment? Now is your time. Seeing no other comment, I would take a motion. Counselor Kylie?
Yes. Move that we move into executive session regarding consulting with legal counsel or reviewing communications from legal counsel about proposed or pending litigation or contractual matters pursuant to South Dakota Codeified Law 12523.
Second. Nyzer?
Motion by Kylie, second by Nyzer. We'll take a roll on that. Do we need to take a roll?
Councilmember Kylie?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Nyzer?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
The motion is passed. Thank you all. We're going to move into executive session.